I'd like to call and order Township North Huntington Board of Commissioners regular meeting for Wednesday, October 18th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Roll call, Manager Falk.
Commissioner Stumpf.
Here.
Commissioner Atwood.
Here.
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Zona.
Here.
Commissioner Goss.
Here.
President Haggas.
Here. Could anyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in opening prayer by Pastor Hook from Calvary Church?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your heavenly Father, we just gather humbly before you, the saving Lord, we just ask that your presence be here in this place where as decisions are being made, we ask for discernment, guidance, Lord, and just the best interest of the township as a whole. We ask, Lord, that you bless all of the leaders present in this room, all of the residents here as well, Lord, allow discussions to happen under an umbrella of grace and under an air of understanding. In your heavenly and holy name, amen.
Thank you.
If any residents would like to speak tonight, could you please sign the book at the podium? Oh, excuse me. Yep. If I could ask Fran Bevan and Judge Megan Belik DeFazio to come up and who'll swear in Fran Bevan as the sixth ward commissioner? Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for having me.
Thanks.
You all ready? Come back? All right, so you're putting your right hand, your left hand is for the Bible, right hand up. I, Francis Bevan, do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and the ordinances, resolutions, and laws of North Huntington Township, Ward Six, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with honor and fidelity. Furthermore, I affirm that I will uphold, obey, and enforce the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and North Huntington Township without consideration to a person's race, color, sex, religious creed, sexual organization, age, chastity, ancestry, handicap, or disability. Congratulations, see you.
Congratulations again. Welcome back.
No better time to start than now. All right, if any residents would like to speak tonight, could you please sign the book
First resident is Jerry, if you could just come up the podium, say your name and address for the record, sir.
Jerry Duche, D-U-C-H.
And your address, please.
Two seven zero Porter Drive.
All right, thank you, sir. You can state what you came up to talk to the board about.
All right. Okay, to the commissioners, at the September Zone Board meeting, we, the residents of Porter Drive, voiced our complaints and concerns over the nuisance business located at two eleven Jacksonville Road. The property sits directly behind Porter Drive. In fact, it is in the backyard of several of the properties, only separated by a remaining sparse line of trees. They're quickly becoming barren due to the season, making the factory completely visible to the residents. The property is Zone R2, residential, non-conforming. Owners Brad Jordan and Christine Paparallo were given a permit to operate twenty-four-hour crafts at the two eleven Jacksonville Road site. The permit was for four employee woodshop operating Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM. It wasn't until the noise complaints started rolling in this past May that it came to light that not only was there a woodshop, but that a laser cutting business had also been created and was operating at the same address, and that they had increased their hours starting before eight AM, many days well before seven AM, working late into the evenings and on the weekends, and also increasing the workforce with the disruption in the community, without consulting the township. I, like them, my wife, and myself personally filed noise complaints with the zoning board in July and with the North Huntington Police Department on September 19th, in addition to other neighbors who have also complained. These complaints led to twenty-four-hour crafts petitioning the Zone Board to have their hours and numbers of employees increased formally, direct result of them adding Pittsburgh laser cutting to twenty-four-hour craft business. We want to express extreme difference between the four employee and woodcrafting businesses that were permitted to work out of this location and the sophistication of the laser cutting business that has become the primary source of revenue. Pittsburgh laser cutting is using fiber and CO2 laser cutting. Some known risks associated with these lasers are the many materials produced, irritant, toxin, carcinogens, and contaminant matter via smoke, vapor, and dust. Pilot coating, welding, CNC routing are just a few of the services they now provide. The noise is constant and annoying from the machinery, iron trucks, vehicles in our parking lot, and the crashing of the sheet sheets of metal. Factory doors are constantly open due to lack of ventilation and un-air conditioning, emitting noise, contaminants, matter directly into our homes and yards. Two noise studies were conducted, both controlled by Pittsburgh Laser Cutting, and the Zone Board visited the site. They had to inform the company the day and time of the visit, and they were not permitted to enter the building, leaving questions of two machines being operated and which were not, and if the doors were even open as they normally are. As a Porter Drive residents who have been clear that the noise level is disruptive, a nuisance, and unacceptable, one particular resident exclaimed that in September meeting, Zone Board meeting, she hadn't been able to open her windows since May. At the September fifth Zone Board meeting, former Commissioner Lindsey Wingrin Romano found it necessary to disclose Pittsburgh laser cutting annual earnings, as if that was the reason enough to ignore the red flags surrounding this nuisance business and a total disregard of the concerns and complaints of neighbors and residents. Thus, the zoning board ruled in favor of Pittsburgh laser cutting, ignoring the outcry of the neighborhood, as this is still an R2 zone area. Paperwork is due to be finalized in November. We feel this business needs to be, we feel this business needs to be an industrial park setting with Parker Riverside not in our backyards. If that cannot be won, we feel that stipulations must be put in place immediately to stop the noise from the machinery, to have the site and sound barriers installed. The doors of the factory need to be closed at all times to stop the contaminant matter from blowing into our yards and homes and eliminate the noise. Trucks should not be permitted to idle in the parking lots, and our hours need to be residentially acceptable so that we can enjoy the home that we as taxpayers deserve. At the September meeting, the lawyer did state that, you know, it was pretty much our bad luck that we bought homes behind the machine shop there. I like to say we've been there for twenty-two years, twenty-three years. When that was a machine shop, we never heard anything. They were in operation then, we didn't hear anything. This is a laser cutting shop. There's a constant, constant noise, even on Saturday, Saturday mornings, I can't, we can't go outside to have a cup of coffee, turn a radio, you still get drowned out by the sound. We found it disappointing that the Zone Board didn't even put any stipulations on the company, so we're asking the commissioners if they could intervene in whatever way that you can to maybe limit the noise. They should put up a sound wall, something to contain the noise. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other residents would like to speak tonight that didn't get a chance to sign the book at the podium? All right, response to citizens' input. Director Fonzie, could you shed a light on this topic a little bit?
Yeah, I know that the zoning hearing board did rule in favor of the applicant by a vote of four to one, and I was under the understanding that the applicant provided case law that allowed, showed different cases in the state of Pennsylvania where a non-conforming use did increase their employees and their work hours, and I think that's why the zoning hearing board voted the way they did, because they weren't increasing the footprint of the building, it was just the number of employees and work hours within that building as it stands. So I think that's where the voting sort of leaned. So, I mean, the board has a right, or has an opportunity to appeal that decision if need be.
If I may, Chairman, I followed this along with the reports that I was getting and talking to Tom McGuire, our building official. We can update our noise ordinance to help with this cause if the board wishes to. I did have him to start working on updating a draft of a noise ordinance to present to the board, to discuss, to present to you guys if you want to change or update the noise ordinance for this type of activity, or other activity as well, but to put something to give us more teeth for other matters throughout the township as well, and hopefully we'll have that either next month or in December.
Would this business be grandfathered with a noise ordinance?
Tom didn't feel it would, it would not be grandfathered in.
Is there anything current with the non-conforming that they are out of line on that can, that is causing this, or are they conforming to the non-conforming agreement?
They had already received zoning hearing board approval for the building as it was. I believe it was the woodworking was slated to have four employees, but then gradually over time, they started increasing, and then the metal cutting came into there. So that's why we were receiving more complaints than usual, that's why they went back in front of the zoning hearing board. But again, the applicant's attorney was armed with case law stating about the non-conforming uses expanding within the building footprint has been upheld other places in Pennsylvania. So again, I think that's why the zoning hearing board voted the way they did.
Excuse me, did you want to speak? Yeah, if you want to come up to the podium to state your name and address, please, thank you.
My name is Sharon Duche, D-U-C-H, and I'm at two seventy Porter Drive, that's my husband. I wanted to say as far as the non-conforming, they went in as this four-person wood crafting shop, which made it sound like four Amish men making little wood crafts. It is now a sophisticated laser cutting business that went in without ever letting the township know. Had I, I think I started the noise complaints, I'm like, what's going on there? And I called and I said, where's all this noise coming from? And they're like, the woodshop? I said, it's not a woodshop, it's a laser cutting business. No one even knew that was down there. And when they went to go check the noise complaints, they were not allowed in the building. We don't even know what's in that building. No one really knows, but they're allowing them to increase all these employees, increase these hours, and no one's even entered that building to see what's going on there. We know there was in addition some type of structure to the outside of the building, which they said, I think was a dust thing, but there was not supposed to be anything added to the outside of the building. So these things are being done without any consultation with the zoning or with the township as to what's going on down there. And now, as my husband said, with the trees going down, it's completely visible to the neighbors. It's in fifty feet within some of these backyards, three hundred feet to my deck. And, I mean, it's just ridiculous. Their doors are open at all times, so this dust and debris is being blown into, we brought up at the zoning meeting, can you put in air conditioning, because they don't have it, and they said that was completely out of the question. So they're leaving these doors open, whatever they've got going on in there is blowing into our backyards. So, you know, we don't know what's coming out of there, we don't know what you're doing in there. There's no regulation, no rules, no nothing. They, that's, their attorney had said, well, this is the same as, you know, a restaurant adding on employees. It's nothing like a restaurant adding on employees. It's like a restaurant turning into a casino. It's two different things. You don't go from four woodcrafters to a mega laser cutting business who's cutting for, they're doing, we have a list of what they're doing down there, it's like a whole gambit of things going on, and, you know, they're doing it for oil companies, they're doing it for medical companies, they're doing all these different things. It's not a small organization by any stretch. We feel it needs to be an industrial park setting, and that's, you know, that's where it should be. Yes, this was a machine shop back in the day. It was a tiny little machine shop, it was grandfathered in. When I moved here, and, you know, like they said, you know, that was your bad luck moving there. No, I checked it out with the zoning board. I called before we ever moved here. I said, what's going on back there? What type of business is back there? They told me it was a small machine shop. I called back there, I said, what do you guys do? You know, I said, is there anything, like contaminants or anything I need to know about? They said, we burn some paper sometimes, but we're stopping that because the neighbors were upset about that. And then they told me once this business goes out, nothing can go in there but a small machine shop, nothing else. So, okay, you know, now here we are with this laser cutting mega business back there, and now we're like stuck, and, you know, it's destroying, I'm sure it's going to destroy our property values, it's completely visible, the sound is all day whirring in the air above our homes. I go out on my deck, it's all I hear, it's all you hear is this permeating through the air, and that's not even, even the, you know, this constant beep, beep, beep of the trucks all day, maneuvering around the parking lots, crashing of sheet metal all day going on, and then they've got these pickups or drop-offs, I don't know what they are, which sound like humongous garbage trucks just smashing every day down there, almost every day, I should say. And they're there on Saturdays, there's no consideration. I mean, like you said, we can't even go out on Saturday morning. It's just, I feel like it's, you know, there is a Pennsylvania nuisance law, I mean, did the zoning board look into that? You know, do we have any rights as residents, you know? And they said, well, there were no formal complaints put in. Yes, there were, I did, I had a police officer at my home who stood on my deck, he goes, oh, this is a really nice yard. I said, do you hear that? And he goes, yeah, I do, what's going on there? He said, oh, is this a business complaint? And I said, yes, and it's right there, you know, so, I mean, they can hear it quite easily. So it's not a small thing, and I'm just hoping that somebody can, you know, if you guys can't get rid of it, there needs to be some stipulations. We, you know, we shouldn't have to leave our homes because of this, and we shouldn't be confined to our homes because of this. We've been here over twenty years, and we love our home, we've put everything into it and as did our neighbors, you know, and we have a nice neighborhood, and we're trying to preserve that. It is R2, yes, it's non-conforming, but that doesn't mean you can put anything you want in there. You know, you went in under false pretense, as far as I'm concerned. If you knew that you had a laser cutting business that was your million-dollar winner, why would you say you have a twenty-four-hour craft, which is a four-person wood cutting business? Obviously, there was, you know, why did you say that? Why didn't you say you were coming in as a laser cutting business in a residential area? You know, that to me is questionable. So I thank you for your time, and I hope that you can help us in some way.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Support, have any further discussion?
Ryan, do we know how many employees are currently working there?
The website, the last time I checked, says over a dozen, so they more than tripled the number of employees from the original woodworking business that they did receive approval for, but again, as Sharon said, that they, they sort of did it on a sneak, you know, we heard these complaints, and then I started researching the websites, and they're kind of advertising that they're growing, and, you know, and that's when we said timeout, you know, you can't do that, you need zoning hearing board approval to do any type of expansion, so that's what they did.
I think public input's done now, sir, but the boards are going to respond, and we'll obviously get back to you with any type of follow-up. Is there any other discussion for the board? Commissioner Goss, you had something?
I do, we just owe it to Jerry and Sharon and the other people in the town in that area to really look into this, we really do. I'm sorry this is going on, and I'm sorry that this is a nuisance for you guys, but I'll tell you what, next week, I'll be coming over to your house if that's okay. Absolutely. Okay, I'll see you guys next week sometime, okay? I promise, thank you.
Any other further board discussion?
I have a couple things. First off, I think precedents set by our board with the residents over on Longview should indicate that we're going to take something like this seriously. I think, personally, I think we should, you know, do it through zoning, if zoning finds something, there's something wrong, something that's not up to the conforming, you know, then we should address it. I think that's our leg to stand on on this.
Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't the existing noise ordinance for residential area, doesn't that have like a decibel or?
The new, the current noise ordinance doesn't list decibel levels. We did away with that because there was a conflict of equipment with the old ordinance, and there was never collaboration with departments, and the equipment never matched up with what the ordinance said. So that went away with the ordinance passed, what was that, 2019, 2020? So we don't have anything like that in the current ordinance.
And the testimony at the zoning hearing board was, was it truthful as far as what we're hearing now? Is there anything that sounds contradictory to you?
From the residents or from the applicant?
From both, like the applicant, when he was pleading his case to have this expansion of the district, was everything truthful compared with what we're hearing now?
I haven't read the full transcript, it hasn't been released to us yet, so I can't comment on that.
Any other board discussion? I guess I would disagree with residents, I'd have a little concern with the noise, and then too about if any type of particulates from the metal cutting or the wood cutting would be out in the air. I think they should be released required to keep their own doors shut while any type of cutting or thing of that nature is going on, and making sure they had proper ventilation. All right, I think Manager Falk and Director Fonzie might be able to follow up with some of that and get back to the board, and we could get back to the residents as well. Thank you. Approval meetings minutes for the special meeting nine fourteen twenty-three.
Motion to approve special meeting from nine fourteen twenty-three. Second?
Discussion. All in favor by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero for the regular meeting nine twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to accept the regular meeting from nine twenty twenty-three with the correction of the presiding officer be changed to President Haggas instead of myself, and the call to order changed to President Haggas also.
Discussion.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Payment of bills?
Motion to pay voucher number two six one seven two through and including voucher number two six two three nine.
Second. Discussion. All in favor by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Staff reports, Public Works report, Director Albert. Anything to add to your report tonight, sir?
I have nothing more to add.
All right. Any questions for Public Works?
I sure do. I do every month. Super great job on cutting that way through Frog Road. You guys put a new basin in, Jason and I looked at it, man, the work was super tidy, super nice, very, very nice. I might have a second job for you down there, just saying. And I also want to send out kudos, I'm going to tell you, is ever repaving our roads, some of the best paving I've ever seen, ever. The roads are just fantastic. So kudos to whoever you've got out, is that Tedesco?
Yes.
Wow, man, are they good.
Tresca, that is, and they've done a good job for us as they have in the past, and they're pretty much one of the big leaders in the industry when it comes to asphalt, so.
You can tell, the quality is unbelievable, and the workmanship, man, talk about precision. Very, very impressed.
Speaking of the paving program, it is completed, we're doing the tidying up, the finish work, birmingham, et cetera, but for the most part, everything's completed this year.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Public Works tonight? Thank you, Director.
Sure.
Park and Recreation report, Director Miller. Anything to add tonight, sir?
I do have one comment I'd like to make tonight. The legendary UCLA basketball coach, John Wooden, was once quoted as saying, "The person who says something can't be done should never interrupt the person that is doing it." To that note, I want to say thank you to all of you from afar for your trust and your belief in allowing me to lead a collective group of individuals that deeply care about this community in creating a historic event just a few short weeks ago that we celebrated. I hope that you found that the resources you provided us were well-spent, well-presented, and well-done. So thank you.
It was a great job, Director Miller, Director Albert, everybody else involved, obviously. It goes without saying what an awesome job you guys did. That place was amazing down there, it was more than what I ever expected, and I think, I mean, not to call anybody out, but if you look in Westmoreland County, there's other municipalities that had a 250th this year, actually, Westmoreland County was 250, and if you try to look at what they did for the 250, I don't see anything that the county really has done. Hemphill Township is 250th, and I think they're having a gala, which is tomorrow night, which is only open to so many hundred people from the township. I think we knocked it out of the park here, we had something that everyone from this township could come and enjoy at some point over that three-day period, and I think we went above and beyond expectations, above and beyond anyone else in the county, truthfully, and I give it to you guys, thank you very much.
There was, if you recall, there was a lot of questions going into it, the cost of the drones, the site of the facility, can this be done? Public Works pulled their weight, Jonathan, I want to call him out, and all the social media and technical assistance he provided, but again, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us and trusting us and believing in us to get done what we said we would do, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Director Miller. Emergency management report, any questions to get back to Coordinator Mahensky? Police report, Chief Rizzo.
Nothing to add but two community events coming up. Saturday, ten to noon at Tropical Smoothie, you'll be able to go there and meet officers. It's kind of like a coffee with a cop that we've done in the past, but their officer, Anna Jandrick, coordinated this with Tropical Smoothie. And then we have the Carving with a Cop event coming up, we're doing that in conjunction with Parks and Recreation, if you want to talk about that briefly.
Yeah, the Carving with a Cop event will precede our Halloween trick-or-treat event. The Halloween trick-or-treat event is from four to six at Indian Lake. Carving with a Cop is going to start at two thirty, and I'm assuming maybe the officers will stick around for the Halloween trick-or-treating as well.
Yeah, um, the next weekend, no, two week, no, next weekend.
Next Saturday.
Yeah, next Saturday, and the registration's limited, so if you go on our website, I believe, Officer Jandrick has something up that you can register, and if you have any questions, you can email her and she'll get back to you. So those are two events that are upcoming this month. And then we're actually going to be doing something on Halloween night also. We're working with Officer Jandrick again to have officers stationed out throughout the community, and we're going to be handing out candy. We're going to advertise those locations, and we'll be posted up in various neighborhoods, so we'll be interacting with all the trick-or-treaters for that night. So we'll have officers out on patrol, but we'll also be posted up in neighborhoods, and we'll have that posted, so, okay?
Any questions for the chief tonight? Thank you, Chief Rizzo.
Oh, wait a second, I do, I'm sorry. Hey, I just wanted, the other day, I got pulled over by one of NHPD's finest.
Finally caught up to you, huh?
Darn right. I'm here to tell you, there is no bias, whether you sit on this board or you're, you know, you're just anybody walking down or driving down that road. I am glad to report I corrected my problem, I had a taillight out, I didn't know about it, and the officer was very nice and gracious and.
And the citation's coming in the mail.
What? Wait, what?
I'm just messing with you.
Come on. Oh, good lord. But yeah, I, I just really wanted to bring that to your attention. So, nice work on the department's side. Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Planning zoning report, Director Fonzie. Any questions on the Fire Officials' report tonight? Subdivision land development?
Yep. There are four items set for your approval tonight. The first is subdivision twenty-one of 2023, the Matta Summit subdivision, requesting board action to approve the subdivision for a Route thirty billboard.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Next item is subdivision twenty-two of 2023, the Jackson subdivision, requesting board action to approve a subdivision and boundary line revision on Highland Avenue in Irwin.
Motion to approve?
Second? Discussion. All of those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Next item is subdivision twelve of 2023 and Site Plan Seven of 2023, the Mesta Electronics expansion, requesting board action to approve this lot consolidation and building addition on Parker Drive.
Motion to approve?
Second? Discussion. All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
And lastly is Site Plan Eight of 2023, Hamilton Automotive, requesting board action to approve this automobile sales lot on Hamilton Road.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Director Fonzie. Solicitor's report, Solicitor Alexander. Oh, sorry, Solicitor Dice.
Don't ever make that mistake. I have nothing to report.
We usually have Craig.
I know.
All right, thank you. Township Managers' report, Manager Falk.
Action to approve the September check register?
Motion to approve?
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
You have a copy of the budget report dated September 2023. Action to approve resolution number one thirty-nine, requesting statewide local share assessment grant of eight-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for Hauntown Playground Revitalization Project.
Motion to approve?
Second? Discussion.
I'd just like to say, I, I brought this last week, and I think this is what we need to do more of. We need to work with the school district and try to do something together. And that we're truly, if this, if we get this grant for the playground project, we're truly creating a great play area for all the kids in this township to be able to use. So I think we need to start looking to do more of these. I think this is a great idea.
Any other further board discussion? I would agree with that. One concern, and it was probably my fault for not bringing it up, is just the use of the playground. And I hope that we're not hearing that we have rental fees to use a playground or pavilion from the school district, as we hear from some of the other youth communities with using fields and whatnot. I hope that it's really a playground for anyone to go and use during normal playground hours, and a pavilion that the community could use, and not be charged arm and leg for it, leased and rented.
And I, yeah, that's a good, good point. I did talk to Dr. Jeff Taylor about that. There's a gentleman here today, Mr. Regola, he's a consulting firm that's working on this also, and they both assured me, and I'm sure that he would assure the board if, if we need assurance, that that playground would be open for free for township residents after school hours, of course, like all the school property up there. Correct? Thank you.
All right. Any other board discussion? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Action to approve resolution number one forty-four, accepting the distribution of ten thousand dollars from the Westmoreland County District Attorney's Office, and the funds to be earmarked for the purchase of four SWAT tactical vest.
Motion to approve? Second?
Discussion.
And just for, just to let you know, I will be abstaining from this vote for obvious reasons, being that I do work in a district attorney's office.
Any other further board discussion? All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Not abstention.
Not abstention.
Zach, I just wanted to say, I wanted to publicly say thank you to our district attorney, Zicorelli, for, for providing this funding, you know, for our SWAT officers. So I just wanted to make sure that that got on. So thank you.
Action to approve change order number one, an increase of nineteen thousand, three-hundred-and-eight dollars and ninety cents for the Lincoln Hills Stormwater Pond retrofit.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Discussion.
Can I ask what the increase, what the change was found to cause the increase?
I believe it was just minimal, like landscaping, rocks, things like that, just, just minimal objects.
Nineteen thousand's not really that big of a deal, but I just wanted to double-check. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Action to approve pay application number one and final to JP Operations in the amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy dollars and three cents for the Lincoln Hills Stormwater Pond retrofit.
Motion to approve? Second?
Discussion.
That is all-inclusive of what we just voted on too as well, correct?
Correct. That includes a change order.
Any other discussion? All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
You know what I have? I'm sorry. May I ask one question? Does this help with the MS four?
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Action to adopt the Memorial Park bench policy.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Action to approve the agreement between Westmoreland County and the North Huntington Township for the disbursement of one-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty dollars of funds to be used for the Lincoln Hills Retention Pond retrofit.
Motion to approve? Second?
Discussion.
This is also another MS four event, yes?
This goes towards the payment of the Lincoln Hills to, to offset that total cost of taxpayer money.
Okay.
It's money from the county to offset their cost.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Action to accept letters of interest for various upcoming board vacancies.
I have a question on this. Have we reached out to the, to those individuals whose term has expired to see if they would like to be reappointed yet?
I have not yet, but I've heard from one that is interested, and the Recreation Board does have, I believe, two or three vacancies that they're just vacant. There's no one in those spots.
Motion to table until we have more information as to the existing people that might want to re-up?
All those in favor of voting to table?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to table passes seven to zero.
Action to release the insurance.
On that topic, could we get a list of the people that are expiring and their assignment?
Yes. I'll provide that list tomorrow, if we have internet.
If I may, can you include the vacancy seats, vacant seats as well on that?
Yes.
Right.
Item number ten, action to release the insurance escrow in the amount of twenty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and seventeen cents for nine-nine-six-five Broadway Street.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Action to purchase nineteen G-Tec F-1110 MDT mobile data terminals from Bright in the amount of ninety-one-thousand-and-sixty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents under PA CoStar's contract zero-zero-three-dash-zero-nine-four.
Motion to approve? Second?
Discussion.
Is that from the grant money, Manager Falk?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Action to purchase cobord.net police RMS information sharing systems, cloud sharing system from Cody in the amount of one-hundred-thousand dollars under PA CoStar's contract zero-zero-six-dash-E-two-two-dash-two-three-seven.
Motion to approve?
Second? Discussion. All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Action to purchase fifteen body cameras and docking stations from Digital Ally in the amount of fifty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty dollars under PA CoStar's contract zero-one-two-dash-zero-four-two.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Action to purchase Cody NCIC module with NCIC Clean Interface and Cody Tracks Interface software from Cody in the amount of thirty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars under PA CoStar's contract zero-zero-six-dash-E-two-two-dash-two-three-seven.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Action to purchase five in-car cameras, five in-car camera packages from Digital Ally in the amount of thirty-nine-thousand-three-hundred dollars under PA CoStar's contract zero-one-two-dash-zero-four-two.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Action to purchase Motorola radio communications equipment from Motorola Solutions in the amount of four-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents under CoStar's contract four-four-zero-zero-zero-two-six-two-three-seven.
Motion to approve?
Second? Discussion.
Just a quick question. I want to make sure. Actions eleven through sixteen, is that?
All grant.
That's the grant?
Yes.
Okay. Could we just have, Manager, would you please explain, explain to the people, just again, briefly, what the grant, who it was awarded to, how much for, and what it was about, that it covers action eleven through sixteen, if you don't mind, please?
Yeah, action number eleven through sixteen is a grant that was awarded to the Police Department, about a million-dollar grant. We're, we're using that through the next three years. We have to purchase the equipment upfront, which we're doing this budget year, and then we get reimbursed, which will be next year's budget of that reimbursement. But this is upgrading our mobile radios, communications, cameras, system in the cars and on the body, software programs. This will help us offset majority of those costs for future years, and offset some of the subscription costs that we currently have in the general fund. So.
And kudos to you, chief, and the folks that, I think, Lieutenant Arrendis?
Lieutenant Arrendis.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That's remarkable. This was over a million dollars for grant?
Yes. And then, and Manager Falk is correct. It, it will offset a lot of our annual costs for the next several years, and it'll reduce our line items by, by doing these purchases.
And what does that mean to the taxpayers?
It, it's a huge savings, and we're getting, and, and we're getting equipment that we need, that we wouldn't have to use capital line items and, and that, and tax money, because eventually, all these things, we're upgrading our body cams to the next generation. So all these things that we're going to have to, would have had to have paid for, because we want our officers to have those things, this grant is gonna offset those costs, and, and our long-term savings will, they'll, they'll be recognized probably for the next half decade.
Kudos to you, Lieutenant Arrendis and Township Manager Falk. Thank you, gentlemen.
No, thank you all.
For bringing another million dollars into the community. Thank you.
Any other board discussion? All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Action to award the BetinaMist surfacing materials bid to Heidelberg Materials, Conneville, PA, in the amount of seventy-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
Motion to approve?
Discussion. All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven to zero.
Action to award the BetinaMist surfacing materials Type B cold patch bid to Highway LLC out of Sarver, PA, in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven to zero.
Action to award the Class A concrete bid to JLB Holding, North Huntington, PA, in the amount of eighty-two thousand dollars.
Motion to approve? Second?
Discussion. All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven to zero.
Action to award the drainage pipe bid to Pleasant Unity Supply, Pleasant Unity, PA, in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Action to award the stone and anti-skid bid to Heidelberg Materials out of Conneville, PA, in the amount of three-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars.
Motion to, motion to approve?
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven to zero.
Action to award the storm inlets and great bid to Pleasant Unity Supply out of Pleasant Unity, PA, in the amount of sixty-five-thousand-five-hundred dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven to zero.
And that is all I have.
All right. Thank you, Manager Falk. Any further board comments? No, I just need a motion.
Motion to, motion to adjourn.
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Meeting adjourned at seven forty-six. The Board of Commissioners held executive session prior to the night's meeting to talk about personnel matters.